The rest of this meeting is going to be that long.
What's that?
We saw the new thing on mayor's business. That's something we haven't heard yet, right? That was moved?
We are live right now, Mayor.
Not mayor's, uh, um, uh, I'm sorry, city manager, but under Brian.
Mine'll just be a quick update.
Okay.
I will call to order a meeting of Wilsonville City Council on December 6th at 7:13 PM. Will the
Not public comment.
The city reporter, please call the rules.
Counselor West?
Here.
Counselor Lehan?
Here.
Mayor Fitzgerald?
Here.
And Council President Ockervall is excused. And Counselor, Counselor Linville?
She's here.
Here.
Thank you.
Perfect timing.
Perfect. That was perfect timing. Thank you. Will the city, um, manager, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the following order of agenda?
Your Honor, I move to approve, um, the agenda.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Motion passes 4-0. Um, we hope everybody had a very good Thanksgiving, um, and had a chance to spend time with family and friends. And in the, in light of that, we unfortunately all are still hearing about the COVID-19 pandemic and the new variants, which is making a number of areas of our lives, the planning difficult and bringing people some health challenges. And we're really thinking of everyone in that regard and hoping that this can be contained. I have a couple of items to update you all on as to what I've been doing in, in the capacity of mayor, representing the city. I did join some other elected leaders in the area to call for congressional support of the proposed Build Back Better Infrastructure Investment Act. And I joined with Milwaukee Mayor Mark Gamble and Metro Counselor Christine Lewis and some others to show support in a rally they had in Milwaukee that has now passed the House of Representatives. Um, regarding the boards and commission interviews, um, it's every quarter approximately. We do have openings on our boards and commissions and we have six openings presently. And I think I had nearly 20 interviews for those. It's really great to see the number of people who are interested in devoting their time to these positions. And just had a great opportunity to meet more of the neighbors, hearing their thoughts and issues and, and discussing with them things that the city is working on. I did hear one area, a common, fairly common among the interview, uh, the interviews was, um, looking for more ways to direct people's attention to the city website so they can find out about, um, I mean, we have a lot of information on our website. And, um, I think our, our growing social media program directs people to say, okay, this is where we're doing a building project. This is what's being developed on a certain street or road. And also where they go to the city to find out answers to questions. Um, I'm, I was hearing good support for that and interest in more of the same and doing better in that regard. So at the next meeting on December 20th, so I, I've just finished these interviews and I will be, um, making some recommendations and sending those to the council before our next meeting. We, um, live at being in two counties, Clackamas and Washington County. Um, one of the things that counselors do is meet with the other mayors and the county commissioners in those counties. And last week there was a meeting of the Clackamas County Coordinating Committee, which is all the cities in Clackamas County. Um, and the focus was primarily on hearing Oregon Department of Transportation discuss issues about the proposed toll project on I-205. And there's a huge amount of information that you can read about on the ODOT website. And of course I'll just do a very brief overview here, but we spent a lot of time talking about, um, especially hearing from mayors closer into the Abernathy Bridge and those areas about highway traffic diversion on local streets and ways mitigation needs will be determined and managed by location for those impacts. Uh, one issue that did come up is how tolling one segment of I-205 before the, the rest of the city system is ready to be told. If that goes forward, that could be problematic in terms of, um, that particular area. So there's a lot of discussion with regard to, uh, the advantages that could be had if that area was not, um, set out by itself as the first area to be told. So there's lots still being studied. We talked about how their, the tolling at, depending on what the rate is, there is a finite amount of revenue it can generate. They do have a couple of different mechanisms to gen- generate revenue to, to accomplish some of the financial needs that our road system has. Um, but the, the, the mayors and I all, all brought up that how would communities, it's important to, to each city and community to be involved in prioritizing mitigation in their particular area. And I heard good, good interest in that. So the city will, and will continue to work with metro area cities, counties and ODOT. And I encourage everybody to go to that ODOT website, read about it, see when they have comment periods and participate. It's a very long process. On a similar vein, uh, the Clackamas County Coordinating Committee has a metro subcommittee of which Counselor Joanne Linville attends. And, uh, they heard a presentation that I expect she may be talking about with regard to the regional transportation plan, the RTP update. Um, we also discussed the pending I-205, I will actually leave that to Counselor Linville. I also attended the Fringe Prairie Forum, which looking to the south, it is, it is a number of the communities that border us to the south. Uh, we discussed the Oregon Aviation Department's Aurora State Airport Master Plan Process. And that committee is one that also Counselor Lehan attends. And I, I expect that she will have some things to report about that. Uh, the planning process has started and both the mayors and cities of Aurora and Donald had quite a few issues of concern about the aviation department and the airport planning process. And as I've mentioned a few times, each of the counselors does have committees that they are asked to attend and represent. And Counselor Lehan has that as one of her assignments. And I expect she will be talking about that. With regard to the concerns about the process, um, we are considering drafting a letter from the neighboring cities, uh, to express these concerns about the process to the governor's office. So, um, upcoming meetings, um, we, we do have meetings coming up. I do with the Washington County Coordinating Committee. Council President Ockervall also participates in that. The Metropolitan Mayor's Consortium has another meeting coming up next month with a number of mayors. And then also the Clackamas County Business Alliance Annual Meeting that, that I attend. And other, uh, counselors are also welcome to attend that. The next city council meeting is Monday, December 20th. So that brings us to the communications part of our agenda. And we're going to hear from our staff member, um, Zoe Monburt regarding Pollinator Demonstration Garden, uh, Planning.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, I am Zoe Monburt. I am the Assistant to the City Manager. And with me this evening is Chris Delk. He is a Parks Maintenance Specialist. And we are here this evening to provide an update on the Pollinator Demonstration Garden and what we were able to achieve with this community enhancement project. Listed on the screen are all of the staff members that made this project possible. The project was developed in order to meet a previous council goal, G5, which included continuing efforts to promote more bee-friendly habitats. The concept was to provide education and information to encourage residents to install pollinator-friendly gardens in their yard and to increase the overall bee and pollinator habitat in our community. The gardens were intended to be varying sizes to provide access to the designs and planting lists to community members. The Community Enhancement Program has a number of goals. At least one of the goals needs to be met in order to qualify for the program. In this case, the project met improving the appearance or environmental quality of the community. It was intended to establish additional pollinator habitats in the community and provide education to community to encourage similar gardens in residents' personal gardens. That was a, one of the goals that was intended to be met and how it was met. Another goal was resulting in the preservation or enhancement of wildlife, riparian zones, wetlands, forest lands and marine areas and/or improving the public awareness and opportunities to enjoy them. In this case, the project met the goal by trying to enhance natural areas and improving the environment for pollinators. It also did so by providing those example gardens that were available to all community members to learn more about pollinators and to create those environments or gardens, um, to enjoy in their own gardens or yards. The original concept that was submitted was a plan to work with a local nursery to design the garden and select the plants that would then be installed. However, after receiving the grant, that wasn't an option that was available any longer. So our parks team stepped in to use their expertise to design the gardens and select the plants. The budget for this grant project was $8,500 for grant funding as well as having a match from the Parks Department. The budget intended to provide the design, the plants, temporary irrigation and an interpretive panel. The Parks Team would install the, the plants or provide the installation. This is where the garden is located. This is at Marassi Plaza in Wilsonville at the northern part of Memorial Park. The garden is where that star is located, which was an underutilized grassy area just south of the parking area to provide access to Steinbuser Barn. This was an ideal location as it's accessible and visible to those visitors going to Steinbuser Barn, but far enough away from the existing play area that it would not provide a conflict for small children and bees. I'm now going to turn it over to Chris to talk through the design process.
Evening, Mayor and Members of Council. As I said, I am Chris Delk. I'm part of the Park Maintenance Specialist Crew over at the City Wilsonville with you guys. So thanks for the opportunity to discuss this, uh, garden and the design process that we went through today. So Parks, uh, Recreation designed the Pollinator Garden for ADA accessibility by creating five-foot soft surface trail around each demonstration garden and cutting out a part of the curb section and making it accessible for all and, and really improving that ability of that garden. We created four different sized bed layouts that could be easily duplicated by citizens. Furthermore, we titled each bed with names that correspond to locations at a house. For example, patio, front porch, terrace and courtyard. This again allows them to look at that and go, hey, where would this fit into my overall design of my house? We sourced the plants from a native nursery. The native plants we selected are readily available at native nurseries within the region. We chose plants that are easier to grow and low maintenance. Um, furthermore, we want to make sure that we had different flower times throughout the garden from, all the way from spring into fall to increase pollen for the pollinators. We installed a drip irrigation system to reduce water consumption. Um, after two years, once the plants are established, they will no longer need irrigation. Um, these plants again will work on their own and do well. So this image, this image demonstrates the five-foot soft trail that gives citizens a 360-degree point of view of each garden plot. Also, the image, uh, displays how we till the soil to eliminate weeds and help the plant, um, and help prep for plant install. Next slide, please. The image on the left is taken during installation. You can see that we added a two, two inches of compost to top, uh, layer of each bed. So it'll conserve moisture, provide nutrients and provide nutrients to the native soil. We laid out the plants to ensure proper spacing and ensure also that we put the plants in the right place. The picture on the right shows the garden completed. You'll see that we added two inches of arborist rough chips to each bed. This will reduce water usage, conserve moisture and reduce invasive weed outbreaks. Furthermore, we used it to also cover that drip irrigation to make the garden more appealing overall to the citizens and show them that they can also hide that as well. Next slide, please. This image shows the garden in, in the fall. As you can see, I have beautiful ginkgo biloba in the background, that nice yellow color also contrasting with the garden, which is add overall to the overall landscape. We also left the plants untrimmed to give material for pollinators as well as a place to hibernate. So we wanted again to demonstrate the garden, the homeowners, that you can come here, the citizens, and see that you, how to manage your garden day to day. Further morning, furthermore, pruning the plants, um, at this time would affect the spring flowers, thus reducing pollen in the spring. So it also, we can also again demonstrate when the proper time to prune plants using this garden for the citizens as well. At this time, I'll turn it back over to Zoe. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Wonderful. Thank you, Chris. So not only will this garden provide something for folks to look at in between the parking lot and the Steinbuser Barn, it also provides information to let people know the importance of pollinators in our community. And this kind of habitat can provide, excuse me, it also provides the resources to help our community understand how they can replicate this at home. And that was the primary purpose of creating this specific Pollinator Garden. We do have three other Pollinator Gardens in the community. Two are located at Memorial Park, near the Community Garden and the Dog Park. And one is located at Water Treatment Park. These are larger areas, so they're not necessarily meant to be replicated. But that's why we wanted to move forward with these smaller gardens so that they could be replicated within the community and show that they really are accessible. This is the interpretive panel that was installed right next to the new Pollinator Garden. It provides information about pollinators. This is standard information that we have shared previously in the community. But what's really exciting about this specific interpretive panel is that QR code. The QR code on the screen is also on the interpretive panel and takes you directly to our website. This is our Bee Stewards website that talks about the importance of pollinators, the Bee City USA program that we're a part of, and also now includes the Pollinator Demonstration Garden. It identifies its location. Down at the bottom of the screen, it has the designs for all four of those new garden plots. It identifies the size of each one. And then there's also a tab that has a planting list, all four of the gardens. When you click on those links to the different designs, you get these that pop up. So again, it has those attractive names that Chris had talked about, the patio garden, the terrace, front porch, that are meant to help identify the size of these gardens. It shows how they were planted as well as providing the planting list. This also allows folks to identify what plants are out on site. So if there's one in particular they really want to have, and maybe they only have a small patio, they can plant that specific potted plant at their home. So it really is intended to be replicated throughout the community. And then from that QR code that we saw previously, folks can pull this up on their, their mobile device when they're out visiting the Pollinator Garden. We also have new community programming. This wasn't necessarily envisioned when we came up with the project idea, but it's something that our natural resources staff and Parks and Recreation staff are really excited about. Back in November, the Natural Resources Staff had a Better Backyard Habitat Presentation at Steinbuser Barn. And they were able to use this new demonstration garden as a resource to provide more information. It's my understanding that the Parks Department's excited about other future opportunities as well. Chris, did you want to weigh in on that?
Uh, yes. So the Parks and Rec side would like to teach classes, um, for example, like Bee Hotel Classes and Pollinator Gardening 101. Those classes again will get back to the community and continue to build, um, that connection and, and help to build gardens for pollinators throughout their background, background. Thank you.
Great. And at this time, we'd be happy to answer any questions about this project. Um, but this is a part of our, um, our interest in sharing the community enhancement programs with you and with the community, so you know where these dollars are going.
Thank you. I see we have a hand raised by Counselor Lehan.
Uh, yes, I have two questions. One is, uh, has to do with the discussion we had had or questions I had raised about, uh, pollin- the potential for a Pollinator Garden of some sort, perhaps, um, uh, a waterless garden on the vacant lot that we have in town center. So, um, and, and, um, I know the staff was going to look into that, but I never heard back. Is there, is that a possibility or are there other, uh, obstructions and it just can't be done in that location? And the second question has to do with, um, oh, the butterfly habitat. So do we have, uh, I know we were giving away the, the milkweed plants. Um, so people would plant those for butterfly habitat. Is that incorporated into any of these pollinator things as well?
I can answer the first one and maybe Chris can, um, or Dustin can chime in. I did review a proposal sometime back when you first brought that up, Counselor Lehan, that I, um, gave a thumbs up to and I, I don't have the recollections, but I can share that plan with you or Dustin can weigh in if he's got information.
Yeah, I can, I can weigh in on that, uh, Counselor Lehan, Dustin Schule, Park Supervisor, City Wilsonville. Um, yeah, we worked, uh, as a parks team, um, actually with a lot of Chris's knowledge. And we're going to, uh, install a, um, wildflower, a half acre wildflower planting in there. Um, irrigation is a limiting factor, so we'll do some, um, some irrigation as needed, um, over the top. Um, but it should be a, a, a good pollinator habitat, a lot of native wildflowers. And, uh, from a technical standpoint, Chris probably has, uh, a better expertise pool on that. I used to, um, install them in Bend quite often in a, in a previous role.
Yeah, so the wildflower display over there would definitely have multiple natives. Um, it would be well-established and can you do, um, produce that in water needed, which is amazing on that part. And you'll get a definitely a good flower display as well as also beating pollinators of all sorts. As far as the, uh, milkweed over at Best Pollinator Garden, we did add milkweed, um, showing milkweed on the, um, main garden, the courtyard garden in the back of it has that. So we did add some of that for that as well for those butterflies. So we did put that into mind as well. So our goal was to get lots of pollinators, not just one particular bee, but lots of bees and hummingbirds as well as butterflies. So we tried to get as diverse as possible for the, for the pollinators out there.
Okay. Sounds great.
Sounds like a home run. Well, thank you. I, I don't see any other hands raised. It's okay. We will, we'll move on, but this is fantastic. Thank you for, uh, sharing this and I'm sure we're going to have this, um, this would be one of these tidbits that can go out on social media to direct people down to look at that. And, um, thank you to our citizens and counselors who participate in the Community Enhancement Committee. So we will now move to citizen input and community announcement. This is an opportunity for visitors to address the city council on items that are not on the agenda. It's also a time to address items that are on the agenda but are not scheduled for a public hearing. Staff of the city council will make every effort to respond to questions raised during citizens' input before tonight, tonight's meeting ends or as quickly as possible thereafter. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Do we have anyone waiting to comment?
I think we have people in the lobby, but I think they're here for the, um, public hearing. So let me just clarify that with Zoe and Kim real quick. No, we have no public comment, Mayor.
Thank you. So that brings us to the much-described section of our agenda called Counselor Comments, Liaison Reports and Meeting Announcements. So we do want to hear where you are, the counselors are assigned to go to committees. We want to hear about that. We want to hear about meeting announcements, although we do have all of those listed in the packet. And we also have a point for Counselor Comments. So we will, um, start with Counselor Lehan.
Oh, we will. Okay then. Uh, I was just trying to get my other screen up. If I can do that. Ah, there it is. Um, okay. So the, the main thing that I've been involved in, in since the last council meeting has been the, uh, air, the Aurora Airport Master Planning Process. They did have a Zoom meeting. Um, I was unable to get in, but, but I watched it. Uh, I watched it on the Zoom thing and I, and I forwarded some questions to, um, Chris Namso, who was on the Zoom meeting. They did let him in. So, uh, I don't know. They, they had some multiple, uh, problems with that. And part of the, with, with functioning on their Zoom. Part of the reason that, uh, the, the three mayors are considering, um, sending a letter is to raise some of these concerns. And one of them was that, was the people who could not get in. The other was, who are the people who are in? Because, uh, several of them were not labeled. Uh, or you had multiple people from one agency. It wasn't clear who was, um, a, a staff member versus who was a member of the committee or the, of the master planning process who was not support staff. Nothing was clear and, and, and the panel was so large, no one could know who all those people were. And then many people could not get in even for public comment, uh, who, who tried. So, uh, so that was a frustrating thing. We're hopeful that they will get some of these, um, things ironed out in the next time around. The other issue that we raised was, um, the agencies that they had and the agencies that they did not have. They, since they did not have representative from Department of Agriculture or anyone from DEQ. And of course, the environmental issues are some of the big ones that have been raised and continue to be, to be raised. So, uh, I don't know how much to go into some of the other things that are being considered in this letter. I presume, um, uh, the mayor has, uh, has covered a lot of what's there. I, I don't want to just beat up on them on the, uh, on their Zoom meeting because, I mean, they, they had probably six or seven people on that Zoom meeting were staff or consultants. So, so they were, they were, it was not for lack of, uh, lack of assistance, um, that they couldn't operate a Zoom meeting, but there it was. And that's about all I have to say about that. The other thing I was going to say in terms of comments as opposed to reporting about the Aurora Airport is that, um, uh, before anyone else does, and I'm sure others, people will mention as well, that our, our holiday lights are, are just fabulous. Um, every year they come up with our staff, I, I don't know if this is Public Works or Parks or combination, but every year they come up with, um, new, uh, and more interesting ideas of things to light up. And, um, uh, the, the, the lights in Town Center Park are just fabulous. And I could see that lots of families were really enjoying them and, uh, there in the, in the evening. And, uh, and likewise, all the way down in Wilsonville, Rhode And likewise, all the way down in Wilsonville Road, every year, they come up with something new and different, and I just want to compliment them. And I would say the same about our neighborhoods. Certainly, Park at Maryfield and Villebois, the neighborhoods I tend to drive through the most, lots of beautiful decorations. And I think this is, a lot of this is because of LEDs. Everyone has shifted to LEDs, that you are able to put more lights out, and decorations of one sort and another, and it doesn't necessarily drive your power bill through the roof. But our neighborhoods likewise are looking fabulous, if you just want to drive around some of our neighborhoods. We should probably have a contest. Anyway, that's about all I have to say, unless you have questions about the airport master planning process, I'd be happy to answer anything.
Okay, I'm not seeing any. Thank you, Councilor Lehan. We'll move to Counselor West.
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to take my time to make a comment about something that's brought the last couple meetings, the last couple meetings, the Build Back Better Act was promoted here at City Council, and I just want to make some comments around that. And just to bring some context to the topic, according to the Congressional Budget Office, President Biden's Build Back Better Act will fund $80 billion to the IRS. It will also include hiring 87,000 new IRS agents, a new army of IRS agents. It increased tax audits across the country by 1.2 million. Additionally, it doubles the chances of Oregonians or other Americans across this country in this difficult time of being audited. It's not targeted towards the wealthy 1%, but people making as little as $25,000 annually will be targeted with this new increase power by the IRS. The Build Back Better Act is harmful, and I think that we should be really cautious before we support it as local leaders. The legislation is also an attack, I believe, on small businesses. This tax and spending spree will exasperate inflation, and it will hurt working families, low-income and vulnerable populations the most. I do the grocery shopping, and my house is cold. Right now bacon is $7 a pound. If I go to buy, if I go to Safeway to buy a package of bacon, it'd be as much as $17. Ground beef is $5 a pound. Bread, produce, cereal, food, it's a height that's been in 30 years, probably in my lifetime almost. People are making tough choices, food, heat, electric, rent costs right now, gas, and if I can figure out whether to put gas in tank or pay their medical bills. And I would urge us to be really informed before we support as local leaders something like this, that would exasperate inflation further. I don't think Oregonians can afford it, and I don't think, right now, is the appropriate time to fill the coffers of government when people can't fill their cupboards. And so that's kind of my comments around the Build Back Better. I think it's appropriate as local leaders, if we're asked to support such a thing, that we know everything that's in that bill.
Thank you, Counselor West. Counselor Lindvill.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm going to confine my comments to try and synthesize for you the plans for the update on the Regional Transportation Plan. And that is a more difficult thing to do than it sounds. So just to give a little bit of context, the Regional Transportation Plan is a state and federally mandated long-range transportation plan for the Portland metropolitan area. And the Metro Council has been charged with oversight for leading and coordinating the updates. The last update was done in 2018, and it would seem that, because that was a three-year process, that it would seem odd that we're in the midst of doing another one. But the rationale is that there have been a lot of changes since the adoption of the 2018 Regional Transportation Plan. And some of those have to do with climate change, with rising inequities, and public health, safety, housing affordability, much of this brought on by the pandemic, changes in commute trips, and needs for public transportation, and then systemic inequities. And one of the things that's interesting is that, one of the little kind of data points that was brought up in the documents is that we have changed our, just in the few years, we have changed our mix of, and I'm trying to get to the data for you, here it is, that the Portland metropolitan planning area, which we are a part of, the difference between 2010 and 2020 is that we, and I, all of the persons of color have increased in percentage, and the percentage of white, of the white population has decreased almost by 10%. And so there is a need for the change, to go back and update the plan. And what is hoped is that we will, we will have an opportunity to have input into the plan. And I'm hoping that our C4 Metro Subcommittee kind of gets charged with doing some of the, at least the local communities, some of the input. This is going to be a three-year process, and it is not anticipated to be completed until 2024. So they'll spend most of this next year in developing the plan, and looking at how do we get priorities established for, and values from the different communities. And that includes racial and ethnic communities, as well as municipalities. So it will go on now for a while, and we'll begin to hear about it. Our Director for SMART is a part of all of those conversations, and so I think that will be, he will certainly be a critical factor in assisting us to get our stories to be told, as well as to make sure that our needs for transportation are included. And just an aside, since we had the discussion in our work session about climate-friendly and equitable communities, rulemaking, and transportation was a part of that, it carries over into this planning as well, in terms of safety, equity, and climate, and climate impact. So those will be conversations that will be spread across this planning process, as well as the equitable communities discussion as well. So, and that was my only meeting for, between the time that we, since we have met the last time. So that's my report.
Thank you, Councilor Lindvill, for attending that meeting and for the report on these many detailed, very involved processes, because the City of Wilsonville does not have the funding to build these roads, replace bridges, and improve our transportation. And it, we have a lot that we have to do with our neighboring communities, and working to find funding to participate in getting our transportation system where it needs to be. We'll now move to our consent agenda, and I would like to ask for a motion to, actually, I'd like to ask the Assistant City Attorney to read the items on consent first.
Thank you, Mayor. The consent agenda tonight consists of the minutes of the November 15, 2021, City Council meeting.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
Your Honor, I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
I'll second, Your Honor.
Motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
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 Motion passes 4-0. That brings us to new business, and I would like to ask the Assistant City Attorney to please read the Resolution Number 2939.
Resolution Number 2939, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville, Oregon, authorizing a full faith in credit borrowing related to the expansion of the city's water treatment plant.
Thank you, and we have a staff report.
Yeah, sorry. Can you hear me? This is Kim, from the city's Finance Director. This is a resolution for council consideration to allow staff to proceed with an up to $7.2 million full faith in credit borrowing to, for the costs associated with the city's water treatment plant expansion. This financing was anticipated and included in the city's water SDC rate study and capital plan update that was completed in December of 2018, and approved by council with Resolution 2724. The water SDC analysis at that time was completed by the FCS Group, and we are currently working with PFM Financial Advisors to structure the most advantageous financing for this endeavor. And we are also working with the law and legal counsel firm of Hawkins Delap Field in Woods, to make sure we stay legally in compliance with any debt financing. This debt financing as well was anticipated and noted in the city's current 2021, '22 annual budget. In essence, this financing agreement will allow the city to maintain financial resources in its water SDC fund for other upcoming projects, as outlined in the water SDC update and capital finance study. So basically, we're using this money to contribute to the city's water treatment expansion project, while allowing the SDC fund then to retain its balance for other water treatment, water capital projects. So that's what this resolution is all about, is just giving us the authority to allow for this debt.
Thank you, Mr. Catco. Does anyone have any clarifying questions? I see Counselor Lindvill has her hand raised.
I do, thank you very much. Mr. Catco, I understand in the, in our packet, it said that Wilsonville will pay, for this expansion project, Wilsonville will pay 66.7%, and the City of Sherwood will pay 33.3% of the total final project cost, per our intergovernment agreement. I just wanted to clarify that that was the case, and so even though we are asking to finance the entire amount, it, we actually won't end up paying that entire amount.
You're correct, absolutely. This is only, our portion of the water treatment expansion is going to be paid for by water operating funds, as well as water SDC funds. So this loan is really to cover our portion of the water SDC fund, and Sherwood will be contributing their portion, which, you know, I don't have it off the top of my head, but I think it's around, what's a third, so it's about $8 million of the treatment plant costs. By the City of Sherwood. Does that answer your question?
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, I'm not seeing any other questions. This is a time to get any more detail you might want. Oh, Counselor West.
I was going to offer you a motion.
Oh, well, seeing no further questions, do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Your Honor, I move, okay, thank you. Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution Number 2939.
Second?
I'll second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
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 Do we need to wait?
Where is Counselor Lehan?
He stepped out for a second.
Oh, I, yeah, I didn't see all the pictures on my screen.
Does it just pass because we have a majority, or do we need to wait? And you get like a parliamentarian?
I don't have a, an extension or a vote. From our parliamentarian, do you think we should recess for a moment?
I think we have a majority, but I would say let's recess for two minutes and see if Counselor Lehan comes back.
And we will not officially recess, because unless we want to take a vote for that.
We can just chat, we have a discussion, right? We didn't have, we can.
That's correct.
Oh, there she is.
There she is. Okay. Counselor Lehan, we are just voting on Resolution.
I'm good with it. I got people checking in.
That's right. We support our small businesses, you know, they get, so, all in favor of Resolution 2939, raise your hand and say aye.
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 Motion passes 4-0. That brings us to the public hearing for Resolution 2938, a legislative hearing, and will the city attorney please read the resolution?
Resolution Number 2938 Legislative Hearing, a Wilsonville City Council Resolution approving the Urban Forest Management Plan.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. My name's Kerry Rappold. I'm the Natural Resources Manager for the city. And with me here tonight is Chris Pfeifer. He's the Project Manager for Planet Geo. And so Chris and I will be providing a presentation, but first of all, I just wanted to note some things from the staff report. As you saw, the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on November 10, and within that public hearing, they recommended approval of the plan to the city council. We did not receive any public comments from the Planning Commission during the meeting, and just move forward with the plan that you have tonight. In addition, with the staff report is the draft, or the final management plan, and then the public record that was conducted with the Planning Commission. So if Chris could be brought up, we'll, no?
What's that? Oh, Mayor, do you want to read the, the public hearing script, and then we can do the staff report? You're muted.
That's a problem, okay. I will call the Board of Wilsonville City Council Public Hearing on Resolution Number 2938, as has been read. Ladies and gentlemen, the city council will be taking public testimony tonight during the public hearing. The hearing will be conducted in the following manner. City staff will present a report, testimony by proponents, opponents, and those neither in favor nor against the proposed resolution. While the city council meetings are open to the public, the meeting may also be attended remotely in accordance with Oregon law. Information regarding how the public can attend this meeting remotely and give testimony is posted at City Hall and on the city's website. Notice was given that testimony could be submitted for the record in advance in writing, by emailing or mailing it to the city recorder. Testimony may be submitted in writing at any time prior to the closure of the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, no further testimony in any form will be accepted. If you want to participate in this meeting remotely when the time for public testimony is called, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom or press star nine on your telephone if you would like to testify, or if you'd like to notify the city recorder you wish to submit written testimony. If you have difficulties with these instructions, you may call the number on the screen, 1-699-900-6833, and when prompted, enter webinar ID number 815-3605-6468. Both numbers are shown on the screen. When called upon to testify, state your full name and address for the record, unless you've already submitted that in writing. I request from those providing testimony not to repeat testimony that has already been given to the city council. Simply in Simply indicating that you agree with the prior testimony given by a speaker you identify is sufficient. If you wish to submit written testimony when called upon, email your testimony to the city recorder who will provide copies to the council. Staff, please present your report.
All right. Well, thank you, Mayor. Um, it sounds like there's been a little bit of a, a mistake or something with Chris, the consultant, joining me here tonight. Uh, hopefully he'll join me soon. Um, but I'm going to proceed forward with the presentation. I was going to do the initial part of it anyway. So hopefully he'll be able to connect up and actually present the plan. So, as I mentioned, we're here tonight for the public hearing for Resolution 2938. And it's the adoption of the Urban Forest Management Plan. So what we want to do tonight is give you just a little bit of an overview of the project and then some of the plan highlights. And then look at the goals and actions associated with the plan. And then, um, what we're doing to support that as we move forward. And then there's some time at the end for discussion. So I just wanted to let you know where we've been in terms of the process. This actually started last May of 2020. And, uh, we had the kickoff and then we moved into one of the more important steps of the project, which was a tree inventory. So we did some work looking at, uh, Town Center and Charbonneau in terms of that tree inventory. And so that information was added into the 2018 inventory that was done. And ultimately, it's reflected to in terms of the 2021 inventory that was done after the winter storm. Then there was a research and discovery stage where we compiled a lot of different information and used that as the basis for developing some of the information we shared with the public. So last fall, we had two surveys and two public meetings that were done as part of that outreach. And then between January and February, they actually did the plan drafting, developing the draft plan. And so as I mentioned at a, a previous work session, um, because of the winter storm and also some information that we were able to incorporate in terms of the tree equity score, we took a little bit of extra time in terms of developing the plan itself. And that was reflected in terms of what we brought to the Planning Commission in September and ultimately in November, on November 1st to the city council. And so we've had, like I mentioned, the public hearing at the Planning Commission on November 10th. And as I mentioned, they have recommended approval of that plan to the city council. And we're here tonight then on December 6th to do the public hearing with, with the council. So Chris has now joined me for the meeting and I'm going to turn it over to him. So I can just move through the slides, Chris. Just let me know as you want to advance.
Okay. Yep, that will work. And, uh, thank you, everyone, for the opportunity to present. As Kerry said, my name's Chris Pfeifer. I'm Director of Urban Forestry Consulting Services for Planet Geo. And, uh, just wanted to start off again by saying thank you for the opportunity. And so I'm going to go through a bit about the project itself and the approach, some of the key findings and highlights, and then get into a discussion around the goal framework. And then wrap up with, uh, any last, uh, comments and, and then field the questions. And so, um, before getting into a discussion around the, uh, Urban Forest Management Plan project, I'd just like to start off with a, um, brief quote from James Clark from A Model of Urban Forest Sustainability. And it helps to really set the stage with these types of, um, projects and presentations. And that quote reads, "Urban trees and forests are considered integral to the sustainability of cities as a whole. Yet, sustainable urban forests are not born, they are made. They do not arise at random, but result from a community-wide commitment to their creation and management." So this, uh, quote is just a great reminder of the urban forest as a vital asset to the city and that it requires proper planning and management that's guided by a strategic plan as well as the importance of the community, uh, involvement in the development of the plan. So this slide starts off with the overview of the planning approach. And we're just going to keep this high level. As Kerry showed in the timeline, it was an extensive planning process. The results of the planning, uh, ended up being summarized in the research summary. But to develop the plan itself, there were six planning elements that we implemented. And we started with a research deep dive, then we conducted city staff meetings and did the data analyses from the inventories that were completed from the project as well as looking at existing data sets. We then used that data to establish, uh, benchmark values so that we could compare to other cities as well as industry standards. And we went through an extensive urban forestry auditing process as well. And then throughout the project, we had a series of engagement sessions that I'll highlight in the upcoming slides. But from these planning elements, as I mentioned, uh, they were summarized in the research summary. And we used our findings to develop the goals and actions that we'll highlight in this presentation. And so we're going to talk about some highlights on the next slide here. And so, um, looking at the highlights, uh, we just wanted to cover some of the, um, primary frameworks of how the plan was developed. And so, um, these highlights are outcomes of our planning effort. And first, we look at the urban forest analysis. And that's where we identified the structure, condition, the extent of the public tree population, the street trees, using the public tree inventory data. And then we took a look at the canopy from a top-down perspective with the tree equity data. And that helped us to, um, develop some strategies and planning efforts for focus areas to complete the benchmarking research as well as the auditing. And then the findings from this analysis were detailed in that research summary. But then we have, uh, Urban Forest Management, where we completed these tasks to inform strategies. And so these consisted of staff interviews, um, where we gathered an understanding of existing operations as well as those shared challenges and priorities so that we could establish realistic strategies in the plan. And then, uh, through our findings of the analysis and the staff meetings, we, um, established strategies that addressed tree preservation and removals, storm preparedness and response, uh, canopy goals and priority planting areas. And then we completed additional, uh, studies to support plan implementation, like the funding mechanism. But then we look at the community engagement highlights. And this is where we conducted those sessions throughout the project and the planning process. And the outcomes from these sessions informed the plan's vision, goals, strategies, as well as potential programs and services. And some of these sessions included two online public surveys, a photo contest with nearly 90 photos. And then, uh, we also included project updates on the Let's Talk Wilsonville website as well as social media posts and articles, um, about the project in the Boon's Ferry Messenger. And then on the next slide, we talk about, uh, some of the, uh, framework and highlights of what's in the plan. How is this, how does this all come together in the goal framework? And so this framework is based on a 25-year timeline or planning horizon. And the goals were developed with the long-term vision in mind. So then the action priorities and the targets were drafted to achieve the respective goals for each of those. So on the next slide, we look at, um, the primary framework of, um, setting the stage with the urban forest vision. And the urban forest vision, there's an overarching goal to increase tree canopy cover. And using the American Forest Tree Equity Score Tool, we found that 30% of Wilsonville is covered by tree canopy when viewed from above and has an overall tree equity score of 77 out of 100. So a goal of 36% tree canopy in 25 years was drafted, which would require 27,000 trees and would bring all areas in the city to a tree equity score of at least 75. And just to note on tree equity scores, they're calculated from things like tree canopy cover, population density, uh, income, employment, uh, surface temperatures or just general temperatures as well as race, age, and health. But then within the plan, additional studies and strategies were developed to assist in, uh, achieving these targets and these canopy goals. And we applied the counselor's feedback, um, from, that we received during the work sessions. And one of the more recent updates, uh, based on the counselor's comments, is shown on the map where we included, uh, potential tree canopy goals for each of the city's, um, census block groups. And on the next slide, um, we start to talk about the goals that support the urban forest vision. So to achieve this vision and the 36 by 46, these series of goals were established. And on this slide, we see the goal theme in the left column, followed by the goal statement. And these goals range from policy and staffing to data and plans along with enhanced community engagement as well as urban forest management or green asset management. And on the next slide, um, we start to get into the actions that support each of the respective goals. So on the left, we have the goal and then the series of supporting actions on the right. And just to note that these were paraphrased for the presentation with some of the key elements to the action in bold font. The tree policy actions relate to canopy goals, storm and disaster management, and manuals for proper tree maintenance. On the next slide, we look at capacity, training, and authority. And these actions consist of a working group to oversee plan implementation, to, uh, look at the priority strategies, the, um, monitoring methods to make sure that the plan's being implemented, and also the reporting aspects of it as well. Uh, how are we doing? What strategies need to be adapted? Where can we close gaps and leverage resources? These actions also include looking at maintaining certifications, uh, implementing standards and best practices as well as training. But then we look at the assessment and plan school. And, uh, to measure and, uh, to measure improvements and to adapt strategies over time, it's important to continually evaluate the urban forest. And you do that through assessments and plans. And through the recommendations, we look at, um, maintaining an inventory and reinventoring areas, uh, establishing planting plans that use the information provided in the management plan to, uh, be strategic about when and where and what types of trees are planted. As well as doing follow-up auditing and gap analysis exercises to, again, look at what's working well and where there needs to be improvements. The next theme on the goals looks at, uh, community engagement. And community engagement should include, uh, consistent messaging. And you want to look at a collaborative effort with, um, city partners as well as internally with departments to have consistent and strategic messaging. And then also looking at education relating to urban forestry and trees and proper management. And looking to strengthen and establish partners, volunteer events, the recognition of urban forestry stewards in the community and maintaining that important status of the Arbor Day's Tree City USA program. And so we want to encourage and we lay out some strategies to do these engagement sessions where the entire community and various types of cultures and demographics are represented and acknowledged and, and heard from in this engagement process. And lastly, we look at the green asset management. As I mentioned earlier with that quote, urban forests are seen as vital assets to the community. And so green asset management looks specifically at, um, the strategies, the actions relating to planning and managing existing and future pests and diseases, um, managing tree risk, looking at strategies for tree maintenance as well as strategic tree planning, planting that aligns with canopy goals and planting priorities that are set. And so on the last slide, this is just a, a slide to, um, prep the open discussion period. And I just wanted to do a quick recap that we covered the project timeline, a high-level overview of the planning approach with those six planning elements. And then I highlighted some of the planning processes and findings, which then led to the presentation of the plan's, uh, vision, goals, and actions. And as a reminder, uh, these actions relate to policy, staffing, assessments and plans, community engagement, and management. And all of these actions guide the plan and the city towards the urban forest visi- vision. And this, these actions being implemented will enhance the city's urban forest, uh, the programs that manage it, as well as the community that shapes and benefits from trees and the urban forest. So at this time, I'd like to open it up to Kerry to see if he has any last comments and then take your questions. And I want to thank everyone again for the opportunity to work with the city on this important effort and to share our findings and discuss the plan itself. So thank you.
Well, I just want to acknowledge Chris and his team. I, I think they've done a wonderful job with the plan. I, I feel it's truly representative of the input we received from the community, the input we received from, you know, the Planning Commission, the city council. And I think it'll prepare us well for going forward to deal with a variety of situations and issues related to our urban forest.
Thank you both for that, um, really thorough report, uh, dissemination of a, of a, of a very involved process that we're going to be using this report for many years ahead. So at this point, I want to ask if any of the council members have questions for the staff or for our counselor or our consultant, Mr. Pfeifer? Counselor West?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Really beautiful presentation. Um, I think we, um, stated that even last time in our prior presentation previously prior to this, um, hearing here. But thank you. Good job. I have a quick question. Could you define the term tree equity? It doesn't seem like an intuitive word to have attached to the word tree. And I was wondering if you could define that for me and let me know what that exactly means.
Yeah, sure thing. So this is Chris Pfeifer with Planet Geo. And, uh, tree equity looks at, um, a variety of, and a combination of factors and looking at where tree canopy exists and where there are opportunities for increasing tree canopy. And I'll just mention those, um, other factors involved in the equation. But the idea is that there's a correlation between, uh, the amount of tree cover and the, um, the neighborhood and the level of income, the, um, the, um, population, demographics, and cultures, as well as looking at, um, other things like surface temperatures. There's a strong correlation when you look at tree canopy. And so those, uh, factors are tree canopy cover, um, population density, income, employment, uh, surface temperatures, race, age, and health. And it was, uh, developed just recently by the, um, um, this organization, one of the oldest in the industry, American Forest. And it's called the Tree Equity Score Tool.
Do we get a score? Do we get like, or do we get an individual, like, like, uh, right, we're going to get some type of things that we need to standard? That part of like our, okay. Is this associated at all with being a tree city?
Not at this time. Uh, there's a lot involved with that. So, uh, the, um, Sustainable Forestry Initiative is establishing the, um, uh, Sustainable Urban and Community Forestry Standard where it'll likely have tree equity score in one of their 11 or 13 objectives. So it is becoming the, um, standard metric for communities. It's just not, uh, fully established yet. It, that, that standard by SFI is in the public comment period now with, I think, a, a spring release. So that's kind of the standard going forward. Uh, relating to Wilsonville specifically, the score is, uh, 77 out of 100. And then you can look at individual census blocks. And then there's also, we have the data in, uh, a raw Geo database. So then you can even refine it further to look at smaller scale, you know, down to the parcel level and start to see where those, um, disparities are, where there are opportunities to close the gaps when you talk about tree equity.
Thank you. Counselor Leehan?
Um, yes, I'm, uh, I'm not as familiar with the term tree equity, but certainly for decades, you have, it's been clear in the urban forestry thing that you can tell the, you can, you can guess the more affluent neighborhoods, residential neighborhoods by the tree canopy. You can, you can tell it in an aerial photo. You don't have to go out and count the trees. You can look at an aerial photo and tell which neighborhoods are. You can look at an aerial photo and tell which neighborhoods are higher income. But is this also true for, when you're using that term, for commercial retail districts? Those kinds of places?
I'd have to look closer. This is Chris Pfeifer, Planet Geo. Look more closely at what all is involved in the calculation and when... Because I know it's at more of a coarse scale at the census block level, so it's using the Census Bureau's data.
Yeah.
So it, what we lay out in like the priority planting areas to achieve canopy goals, we do look at establishing goals by land use or zoning type. Because we understand there are different specifications and design standards for each type. There's also some limitations, but also opportunities for each. So that's our recommendation, is to take this initial assessment of canopy and then do a more further, finer analysis through a high-resolution tree canopy assessment.
Now, the other thing I wanted to say, I have been involved in urban forestry for a while. And is that the difference between urban, I mean, between commercial and residential is, commercial tends to turn over faster. So we tend to tear down every building that is commercial or retail in about thirty years. We wipe the slate clean at Vilbois, at Burns Brothers, you name it. We just go through and Frog Pond. Now, both Vilbois and, well, mostly Vilbois, we were very aggressive about identifying from the get-go and laying the streets out to save the best trees in that situation. Because, for that development, as it changed from Damage Hospital to Vilbois, because a tree has a longer life than thirty years. And we have to take that into account. And we did not as good a job, although we tried, in, with Burns Brothers, changing into Argyle. That's why you have that fir tree and that oak sitting in the middle of that raised-up thing over there. That, anyway, you'll notice it if you see it. We at least saved those two trees. But we did not make much effort on Frog Pond, because I don't think we saved a single tree. And I think we have to look at this going forward. When we develop in areas like Frog Pond East and South, where we're taking over existing residential lots, and the house is going, and along with the house, we do not need to take away every single tree. But that's what we did in Frog Pond. We just bulldozed the whole darn thing. And we're starting all over with brand-new trees. So I think we need to be realistic about our urban canopy, but also about the fact that our buildings have a much shorter lifespan than the trees, or than the trees should have. Their lifespan is easily three times the lifespan of the average building. And yet, every time we go to redevelop and take out a building, we just take out the trees. So that's more the longer look at it, rather than just the static, what is our tree canopy percentage? You know, how do we, how do we not only have a canopy, but have a mature, allow our trees, especially if we're going to have corcus cariana? They need more than thirty years. So that's a comment. You don't have to answer it.
Well, I have a question to go, to follow that comment. This extensive urban forestry plan is obviously something that would take, would guide us over many years ahead. It's going to need funding from various sources that we can find to do this, to implement some of the goals. Some of the things can be accomplished as we go along. But for Mr. Pfeifer, can you comment about how this plan can guide us as we go into future developments to try to do what Counselor Leehan described more dependably?
Right, yeah. So Chris Pfeifer, Planet Geo. And yeah, I had a bunch of ideas and points that I wanted to maybe address or to mention in regards to the comment. They're very important comments. We see that with a lot of cities, where we're establishing canopy goals, but we need to stem the loss of trees. And through the management plan, there are specific strategies, additional studies, and data that can help guide the city going forward. So one of the exercises as part of the planning process was to review existing code ordinances, policies, manuals, design specs, and make recommendations for potential revision to, you know, thinking ahead towards establishing a realistic canopy goal and having a little bit more control over existing trees and canopy in development and redevelopment. So the one thing that the plan looks at, if you recall, the first goal relates to policy. And so that's where you got to have a strong and sound and fair policy in place in order to advance any of the other programs or the other actions and goals. Another thing is to maintain your inventory. And I know private development's different than the street tree population, but having the information on the extent, the ecosystem benefits and services provided, as well as when you look at where street trees are impacted, you can have a better idea of the tree, its potential longevity, what benefits it's providing. Is it the right tree for the space? And then it ties back into policy where you look at mitigation. If a tree does need to be removed, is it just a two-inch caliber tree? Or is it a certain number of trees to compensate for that diameter loss? So...
Okay, I could argue with you on that one. Go ahead.
Oh, yeah. That's just a starting point, yeah.
That's not corcus cariana.
Right, yeah. I'm just giving an example there.
Well, thank you. Thank you. And, go ahead. So at this point, do any of the other counselors have a question? And the reason I'm asking that again is because we are now going to be calling for public testimony. And so I just want to, it looks like I don't, nope, I see a hand. Counselor West.
You almost got rid of us here. Quick question. You said score seventy-seven. How do we compare to other cities or size? And I am just assuming we rock, because I see lots of great trees, and we care about our urban forest a lot here. It's a big goal of this council. I just am concerned like how we are competitive-wise or comparative-wise to other cities.
Right, yeah.
Is the seventy-seven a C or is it an A?
Yeah, so that's a good question. Chris Pfeifer here. So what we tend to see is that, and this is a relatively new tool, but we've implemented for about half a dozen communities and projects. And it's, right now, we're seeing where it's below that seventy-five threshold, which is the American Forest's recommendation, for the cities that we've worked with previously. So being above that seventy-five is a good indicator that you're above what some of the average may be. And we did do somewhat local, you know, it was in the state of Washington, but the community we worked with was at a seventy, seventy-two out of one hundred. And then we compared that to ten cities in the region, and they fell sixth in the list as far as the score. So I would say that Wilsonville's on a good path, you know, above average on what we're seeing. The tool's relatively new, but the data is all there that you can visit and view cities on your own. It's treeequityscore.org, I believe. Yep, treeequityscore.org. And so you type in the city, and then you can explore other cities and their tree equity scores, as well as down to the census block group level.
Thank you very much. And so, you know, if we didn't take these actions, we would probably be going backwards. So it's great to know that we have the power to go forward in this Tree Equity Score and for our neighborhood improvements. So at this point, hearing no more questions for staff, I will call for public testimony. And remember to state your name and address for the record, and whether your testimony is in support, against, or neutral. If you have already filed your address with the city recorder, you could state that for the record. Do we have any persons ready to testify?
We do not, Mayor.
Okay. You're not going to believe this, but I'm going to ask...
I'm sorry.
Pardon?
If I said that, we got a hand raised.
Do we have someone who wants to talk on? I guess we do have one person? Karen C.
And you have three minutes.
I live in Canyon Creek. My name is Karen Carnahan. And I had to do the tree study for our neighborhood back in 2008. And we managed to save, when the building, when the neighborhood was created, saved two really ancient trees. One was the walnut, and one is, you know, spruce. And we lost our walnut at seventy-five years old. And it just got old about four years ago. And we also, the developer, due to the tree planting guy for the city, we have a hundred and forty-four trees that were planted into our neighborhood. So we are contributing to the tree canopy. And we only lost twenty-eight in the ice storm in February, which have since been replanted. Thank you.
Thank you. That's great news to hear. I appreciate you coming to testify. And so I'm just going to double-check. We don't have any other hands raised?
Checking right now, Mayor. I'm being told that that's all the public comment for this item.
Okay. And the reason I'm going to ask the City Council once again if you have any questions for staff is because we were just about to close the public hearing. And so seeing none, hearing no further questions, and everyone having testified, I hereby declare this public hearing closed. Do I have a motion for resolution number two-nine-three-eight? Counselor Leehan.
Your Honor, wait a second. Your Honor, I move that we adopt resolution number two-nine-three-eight.
On first read?
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Counselor Leehan.
Yes, I would say, one of the reasons that we have done as well as we have, and by no means is that perfect, is you might recall, I had to call up to save that tree on Tuesday because I was absent on the day that the council approved taking it out. And I called that back up, and our engineering staff were just brilliant in redoing the entry to, in order to save that red oak. But one of the reasons that I think Wilsonville does as well as we do is because we have arborists on staff embedded in our departments. So we don't have a separate arborist department, or an arborist who lives in some office somewhere, but we have arborists, I don't know where, in the engineering department and planning or parks. We have two or three people, and I think that's an important part of keeping the departments, of encouraging our staff in those departments to get their arborist certification. And we have done that. I give credit to our city manager. And it makes, having those arborists embedded in your planning or parks or engineering staff makes all the difference between, anyway. So just, I didn't see that in there, but that's a big part of why Wilsonville has been as successful as we have.
Thank you. Counselor West.
I remember when our family decided to move to Wilsonville from North Portland. I grew up in a neighborhood with tree-lined streets, an old North Portland neighborhood. But one of the things that really appealed to me were the trees in the community. And specifically, Vilbois is a brand-new development. Those heritage trees are stunning. They're stately. They're beautiful. And I think one of the best things that we can do that's really evidence-based policy is to promote trees, because it's one of the best ways to reduce greenhouse gases, to promote instability of species, to, I mean, like, its surface temperatures, all these things. Everybody in every community can benefit from a strong healthy urban forest. And so I'm super proud, not only of just Wilsonville, but our region's work. And I think Wilsonville, like in many ways, is really a trendsetter on this. And there, and we stand kind of on the shoulders of other great leaders before us, even this council. This has been an ongoing, consistent theme. And I think it's the right, we're striking the right tone. This is the right thing we're doing. And so I'm really excited that we are moving forward with this. So thank you for your work and your presentation too. But those are my thoughts on us having such a beautiful tree city.
Thank you. And I will add that I just want to reinforce that it's no guarantee that we will be able to do these things going forward unless we have support and courage. And it took quite a lot to save that large tree on Paris Avenue. And there were people who did not want that to happen. And there were people who did want it to happen. And with our, we are surrounded by, but we're not far from the Sandy Am Canyon. We have forests near us that are at great risk if they cannot be properly managed and thin, so they're not such a fire risk. We need to replant some of those. There's a lot to be done. And also to maintain the health of the forests near us so that our forests can stay healthy. So I also remember hearing from Portland General Electric during the ice storm about, yes, it's wonderful to have all these trees, but to part of what Mr. Pfeifer said, they're not always the right tree in the right place. And a lot of them are on right-of-way's or private land next to power lines. And we all know what that caused. So I also hope that as time goes on and we talk about the urban forest management plan, you know, the next person who has a chance to plant trees on their land will look to this, and we can all keep getting, keep making it more effective and better over time. But it's, I agree, we are lucky to have this much support and this much history getting us to where we are with our tree canopy. And it's exciting to be able to be voting for this urban forest management plan.
Let me just add, the other important thing is the large degree to which we have undergrounded our utilities. So we have very few overhead lines that are getting in the way of those trees. All of Wilsonville Road from one border to the other is undergrounded.
And so that is a, that is a great point. We're not, we don't have to decimate so many trees to keep making way for the power lines within our city. So seeing no more discussion, there are no further discussion or remarks by council members. Hearing no further discussion or commentary, I hereby call the question on the motion as made and seconded. Those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
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 Those opposed? Those opposed, those abstaining, the motion passes 4 to 0. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
That brings us to ord- excuse me?
Mr. Rappold said thank you for your helpful-
Thank you, Mr. Rappold and Mr. Pfeiffer. So that brings us to ordinance number 853, first reading at the quasi-judicial hearing. Will the city attorney please read the ordinance?
This is the first read. This is the first reading of ordinance number 853, a quasi-judicial hearing. In ordinance of the City of Wilsonville, approving a zone map amendment from the residential agricultural holding zone renamed by ordinance number 851, the future development agricultural holding, effective November 18th, 2021, to the planned development residential four, PDR4, zone on approximately 2.39 acres comprising tax lot 5500, Section 13A, A Township 3 South, Range 1 West, Willamette Meridian, Clackamas County, Oregon, Meridian United Church of Christ applicant/owner.
I call to order the public hearing regarding proposed ordinance 853 on first reading. Do any members of the city council wish to abstain, declare a conflict of interest, or report any ex parte contact or any information gained outside of the hearing?
Do we need to say no verbally?
I think it would be helpful, yes.
I do not need to abstain.
No. No.
No.
I do not either. Have all members familiarized themselves with the application? Please answer. I can't see everyone's picture right now, so it'd be good to mobilize.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, I have as well. Do any, does any member of the audience wish to challenge the participation of any member of the city council? Are we seeing any?
Uh, no, Mayor.
No, Mayor.
Whoops. I don't know what happened there.
Those wishing to testify, please be aware that failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the city council and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals, LUBA, based on that issue. Testimony and evidence must be directed toward the criteria that staff will describe or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation which you believe apply to the decision. Although city council meetings are open to the public, this meeting may also be attended remotely in accordance with Oregon law. Information regarding how the public can attend this meeting remotely and give testimony, give testimony is posted at City Hall and on the city's website. Notice is given that testimony could be submitted for the record in advance in writing by emailing or mailing it to the city recorder. Testimony may be submitted in writing at any time prior to the closure of the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, no further testimony in any form will be accepted. If you want to participate in this meeting remotely when the time for public testimony is called, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom or press star nine on your telephone if you would like to testify or if you would like to notify the city recorder if you wish to submit written testimony. If you are having difficulties with these instructions, you may call 1-669-900-6833 and when prompted, enter webinar ID number 815-3605-6468. Both numbers are shown on the screen. When called upon to testify, sorry about that. That was the coffee cup. State your full name and address for the record. I request from those providing testimony not to repeat testimony that has already been given to the city council, simply indicating you agree with the prior testimony given by a speaker you identify with as sufficient. If you wish to submit written testimony when called upon, email your testimony to the city recorder who will provide copies to the council. At this time, I call for staff to present the proposal and list the applicable substantive approval criteria. We will have planning staff presentation, then comments from the city assistant city attorney, the applicant may make their presentation, and members of the audience who wish to speak for, against, or comment in any way, and then rebuttal from the applicant. We'll now have the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor Fitzgerald and councilors. My name is Cindy Luxhoy, Associate Planner, and I am here tonight to present for city council's review, a zone map amendment request for the Meridian United Church of Christ project, ordinance number 853 and zoning order DB 21-29. As required by statute, I would announce that the criteria applicable to this application are stated starting on page two of the staff report, which has been entered into the record. Copies of the report are available on the counter at the side of the room and on the city's website. I would like to make a correction to the text of ordinance 853 in attachment one of the city council staff report. The date of the development review board hearing was November 8th, 2021, not November 1st, as stated in the text. The subject property outlined in white on this slide is approximately 2.39 acres and is owned by the Meridian United Church of Christ. The property is located in East Wilsonville, south of Southwest Beckman Road and west of Southwest Wilsonville Road, and is surrounded by residential use on all sides. The applicant proposes to partition the property in order to sell the unused southern portion indicated by a blue star for residential development. The applicant may also sell the new sanctuary, which is indicated by an orange star on this slide, in the future. On November 8th, 2021, Development Review Board Panel A approved with conditions and recommended to city council adoption of the proposed zone map amendment. The proposal changes the zoning from residential agricultural holding, or R-A-H, to planned development residential four, or PDR4. Staff notes that the R-A-H zone has been renamed by ordinance number 851 to future development agricultural holding, F-D-A-H, effective November 18th, 2021. The rezone to PDR4 is consistent with the comprehensive plan map designation of residential six to seven dwelling units per acre, as well as the surrounding zoning of PDR3 to the south and east and PDR4 to the west. On November 8th, the Development Review Board also approved with conditions a stage one master plan, stage two final plan, tentative partition plat, and setback waiver for the Meridian United Church of Christ property. Approval of these other requests is contingent on city council approval of the zone map amendment before you tonight. Based on the information presented, staff recommends approval of the zone map amendment request. And with that, that concludes my presentation tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. And the applicant is on the meeting tonight. There are actually two representatives, Rich Truitt and Ben Altman, who are ready to make a presentation as well when invited by council. Thank you.
All right, I didn't want to unmute. We have questions for staff, Counselor Lindell.
Um, yes, I, I just have a question about what, um, I, I understand that the PDR4 designation for the residential zone is compatible with the property that is adjacent. I'm just wondering, what are the criteria that would, uh, have the staff differentiate between zoning this PDR, recommending PDR3 versus PDR4?
Thank you for that question. So the comprehensive plan designation is six to seven dwelling units per acre, and that corresponds with the PDR4 zoning designation. The PDR3 has a lower density on the comprehensive plan designation.
Did that answer your question?
Uh, I understand that they're both, both of those zone options are available in the comprehensive plan, and I understand that they're, each of them are different. Why was this particular parcel recommended to be PDR4?
That's because the underlying comprehensive plan designation is the six to seven dwelling units per acre residential. And so in our code, that corresponds with the PDR4 zone. I believe the-
Okay, thank you. I just didn't, I didn't, I didn't understand that part.
Yeah, I believe the comprehensive plan designation for the PDR3 is residential four to five units per acre, which is a lower density.
It's, I believe, and I'm just going to ask our assistant city attorney to time in here, but I believe now we can move to the applicant making the presentation.
I believe so.
Unless you have a comment.
I believe so, Your Honor, to the extent that staff doesn't have any more questions.
Uh, here is the applicant. We have Mr. Ben Altman.
It's Mayor and Council. I'm Ben Altman with Pioneer Design Group, 9020 Southwest Washington Square Road, Boilin 97223, representing the applicant. I think the primary issue, I guess, is just the zone change. And I think as staff has explained, that the PDR4 we're requesting is, is the, by your own comprehensive plan is the implement, the plan designation of six to seven dwelling units per acre is actually implemented by the PDR4. So we're simply asking for the zoning to be consistent with the plan, which is the way the law is supposed to work. I think everything else is, in our application, we've addressed all the criteria in terms of justifying the zone change and, you know, Design Review Board approved that also. But if you have any questions, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Does any, do any members of the city council have any questions? All right, I'm not seeing any questions. And at this point, it, it looks like we're ready to move to asking if members of the audience wish to speak for, against, or comment in any way.
Do you have any? He's submitted a speaker form, so he can speak if you want.
Okay, we have a speaker who has submitted their address already.
Mayor, I believe that Mr. Truitt is the applicant, and I saw him raise his hand. So I don't know if he has anything he wants to add in addition to Mr. Altman, but he can certainly do so.
Yes, with the permission of council, I would like to offer an opening statement.
Oh, please go ahead. We'll have you comment further as the applicant. I've been, I kind of went past that, so we'll back up. We're still in the applicant section.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Fitzgerald and Councilors Leehan, Lindell, and West. My name is Rich Truitt. I live at 8560 Southwest Wilson Lane in Wilsonville. I'm here this evening as a member and project manager for Meridian United Church of Christ, informally known as the Frog Pond Church. I would like to provide background and context for our request for a zoning change in support of our application to partition the property. Beginning in 1878 with construction of our historic chapel, the Frog Pond Church has been a fixture within the community since before the establishment of Wilsonville itself. Familiar landmarks in town, including Beckman Road, Engelman Park, and Lowry Elementary School, honor our founding families and current members of the church. Over the 143-year history, the church has played an active role in the community, both as a faith community and as a supporter of groups, caring for others, and promoting social justice in the community. For many years, the church served as the home of Wilsonville community sharing, providing an office and counseling space, a food pantry, and reception area. Much of Wilsonville, including past and current developments in the Frog Pond area, as well as the city itself, have literally grown up around the Frog Pond Church. A few years ago, the church began to face some challenges due to declining membership. The situation grew worse during the COVID-19 pandemic. At that point, a small group within the church recommended selling the property and dissolving Frog Pond as a church. The congregation decided against this idea and chose instead to chart a new path forward. With strong new leadership in place, the congregation has committed to remaining for generations to come a vibrant faith community and a continuing source of support for many in our community. The church is well on its way to this successful future. Despite the limitations posed by the pandemic, the church has achieved financial stability. By refocusing on our core mission as a faith and service community, expenses have been reduced to an appropriate and manageable level. While new sources of revenue are being developed by more fully utilizing our facilities, we have committed to operating within a balanced budget. All of the church's resources are now being managed effectively. The church has emerged from the pandemic stronger than it was before with our hybrid worship model. Folks from central Oregon, Hawaii, Arizona, and Mississippi regularly participate in services. New local members have joined us. We are currently hosting a congregation from the Pacific Islands that worships in our sanctuary every Sunday. Recently, another growing congregation also worshiped in their language in our sanctuary for several months. Several other church and community groups have approached us about utilizing space in our facility. The many support groups that we have hosted for years have continued to meet at the church virtually every day of the week. These groups have expressed gratitude for the continuing support from the church even during our challenging period. The deliveries of backpacks of essential personal supplies by our church to adults in custody upon their release from Coffee Creek resumed after the pandemic suspension was eased. The church is sponsoring a team build for community members this month at a home under construction by Habitat for Humanity in Woodburn. The church is currently hosting a sculpture exhibit of the biggest pumpkin project sponsored by the Wilsonville Arts and Culture Council. Through gifts from members of the church and from the larger community, Frog Pond has initiated a remodeling project to update and improve our kitchen and meeting spaces to benefit all of our users. All of this reflects the fact that Frog Pond Church intends to remain an important place of worship and a center for community service in Wilsonville for future generations. This brings us to the basis for our request for the zoning change in conjunction with our application to partition the property. As the next step in our long-term plan for viability, we hope to be able to market a little-used portion of our property for development of homes compatible with the homes in our neighborhood. With the proceeds from the sale of a portion of our property, we will have the opportunity to pay down a portion of our mortgage, establish capital reserves for the long-term care and maintenance of our remaining property, and to increase our investment in services provided to individuals and groups within the larger community. We also intend to ensure that our sanctuary will be more fully utilized by other churches and potentially by other organizations as a community gathering place and perhaps a center for performing and visual arts, consistent with our mission as a faith community. As we anticipate the sale of a portion of our property, the church is committed to retaining and preserving permanently our historic chapel, the adjacent gathering space and classrooms, the library, and the social hall. In closing, we want to- In closing, we want to acknowledge the efforts of city staff, the DRB, and council in assisting Frog Pond Church through the partitioning and rezoning process as we move into our new future. On behalf of Frog Pond Church, thank you for your consideration. I'll be happy to answer any questions from councilmen.
Well, thank you. I'm glad we moved back into the applicant section. That was very important information and background. And it's exciting to hear how people have taken so much time to plan this out. I do have a question. Are you, where are you in the, I suppose it's just step one, and then you'll be thinking about the types of homes that could be envisioned there?
Yes, my understanding, and I'll invite Ben to add to my comments, my understanding is that as we move forward and consider marketing a portion of the property once the final approval has been granted, that that would be subject to whatever proposed development was planned, and that party would need to come back to, to the planning department, to the DRB, and perhaps to council, depending on the nature of that development.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have questions, further questions for Mr. Truitt or Mr. Altman and the applicant, representing the applicant? Okay, I'm not seeing any. So, are we all, is this, are we agreed, we're ready to move to the members of the audience who may be there on Zoom or otherwise to speak for, against, or comment in any way? Mr. Adams, is that correct?
That's correct, Your Honor.
Do we have anyone waiting to testify?
Say again? Pat Wolfram.
Go ahead, and you have three minutes.
I'm sorry, didn't click enough buttons.
That's good.
Okay, I see the timer. So, I'm Pat Wolfram. I now live in southwest Portland at 8950 Southwest Capitol Highway. I lived in Wilsonville 32 years prior to moving here for family reasons, just last year. Wilsonville remains very much the center of my universe. I'm an officer in the Rotary Club, coached dozens, it seems, of soccer and basketball teams. I've worked with your staff, Brian Stevenson, to host this Town Relay for Life event. Wilsonville's close to my heart, and I'd like to speak in support of the rezoning. I'm also a member of Frog Pond Church, which sits on the property in question. And Rich framed it very eloquently and completely. I guess I'd like to zero in on two points. One is that a healthy Frog Pond Church, I believe, is good for Wilsonville. It always has been, and we're totally dedicated to keeping it that way. And the second is, this partitioning project that we're engaged in, which requires rezoning approval by you, is possibly the only viable path to health for this church. We've looked at many different ways to move forward, and this gets the fact of being healthy and strong and healthy for the community. So, why you were good to this town, you heard a lot about that from Rich. Wilsonville's a volunteer town. In the 32 years I've been here, you've always done things to strengthen and empower service and volunteerism. You've done that for Rotary, you've done it for churches, you've done it with fun in the parks. Well, this church's DNA is community service. We do things to enrich the community and bring people together in peaceful and positive and diverse ways, and Rich named a bunch of those. I'll mention one that he didn't mention, the Relay for Life. For years, this church was the one organization that stepped up to do the hard work to set it up, to tear it down, and it was tough. And you're, we had to work with you guys to get creative ways to go about that in Town Center Park. And Rich also mentioned part of this, that in the 90s, the local food bank, Wilsonville Community Sharing, lost their home. They did not have a place, and our church took them in. We squeezed them into our small offices, our closet space, our basement space, and we made it work for years. Now, WCS is in a much better facility now than we were able to provide because we just didn't have the gear for it. But when they were homeless, we leaned into it, and we found them a home. So, that's, that's what we do. Why this is our only viable path to survival? We, there was an approach, as Rich said, to sell the entire church to the city, but when the details of that fleshed out, it showed that we had a very generous one-year lease for free, but after that year, we didn't have a home. It went away. Churches without homes have a very, very difficult road to hope. It's, it's tough. All right, I run out of time.
Excellent. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Wolfram. Appreciate it. Do we have another speaker, Mr. Cosgrove?
I'm checking in. I see no further public testimony, Mayor.
Okay. Is there, this is a chance to ask the applicant if you, if there is any rebuttal you would like to make.
Well, I spoke too soon. Now, I'm being told we do have one additional, one additional.
Okay, I'm, I backed up once and we'll back up again. So, we have another speaker before we go to that last point.
Is it Nancy Rogin? Karen C.
This is Karen Gardahead. I spoke earlier about treats, and now I want to speak to Frog Pond Meridian United Church of Christ. I support what, what, I don't know my first names, Ben and Rich and Pat for the words that they said for our, for our church. And I speak for the part that, I moved to Wilsonville about 21 years ago, found this church within about 12 months, and it's been my church home all this time, and I watched it grow from, being a community that had all these generational folks from back at the inception of the church to begin with as part of this community, and I was just delighted. So, I speak in favor of this. I speak in favor of all the work that, that Rich and Ben have done to make this possible. And then I also acknowledge that the committee that I attended a meeting on not long ago for their work and their amazing questions that they had, looking far out in the future for the possibility of the, of the property and for the church. And I thank the council for entertaining our request. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is that it? Okay, I'm being told that is the last public speaker this time.
All right, thank you. We appreciate the input, and I will ask the applicant again if you would like to present a rebuttal. The formal part of the process.
Do you, do you want to rebut all the people who were spoken favor?
No, I don't have anything to offer in rebuttal. Ben barely has his hand up.
Okay, Mr. Altman.
I was just going to say that.
Okay, so we're all?
It's hard to rebut support.
We're all going in the same direction, in the positive direction. Therefore, I will declare the hearing closed. Is there a motion on adoption of the ordinance on first reading?
Your Honor, I move to adopt ordinance number 853 on first reading.
Is there a second?
Your Honor, if I may, this is Ryan Adams, Assistant City Attorney. I think we need to add some language to that with the interrelation correcting the DRB meeting date from November 1st, 2021 to November 8th, 2021.
Thank you. Will the maker of the motion so amend their motion?
Yes.
Does the second agree?
Yes.
Is there any discussion among the council? Before I call for the vote? Hearing no further discussion, I call for a vote on ordinance number 853 on first reading. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
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 Opposed? Same? Motion passes 4-0. The motion, ordinance number 853, is approved on first reading, and it will return for a second and final reading at our next meeting. Thank you. That brings us to the city managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to give you just a real brief update on some of the ARPA discussions. As you recall, we brought this to you at the last council meeting, or the council meeting prior to that, I'm sorry. And you approved the criteria, and we discussed some of the ideas, and so we're further fleshing those out. But I did want to let you know that the behavioral health contract that we're working on, I have reviewed a scope of work on that, so that will be coming to you in work session. We plan to have Clackamas County Health be present to discuss that scope of work that we've been working on. So, that one is probably the closest to coming to you in terms of actual recommendations. It would require a supplemental budget, and I've been working with the finance director on that. We have some cost figures that we'll be including in there. We have some updated cost estimates on the SDC buydown for the TOD development at the Smart Central location, so that one's getting a little bit closer to coming to you in terms of a recommendation. And with the recommendation from the Parks Department, we're doing a little bit of a pivot. They came to me with an idea to do some ADA upgrades to our parks, and that fits into quite a few buckets for the ARPA funding, so that will probably be coming to you in March or April with, if we get a recommendation to move forward with that, then we could probably start on that work early next summer. So, as we continue to kind of flesh these things out and get more realistic cost estimates, I'll be bringing them to you, probably with a more fulsome presentation sometime early next year. So, I just wanted to give you an update on some of those items so that I keep you in the loop on them, and that's all I have tonight.
And if anyone has any questions for you in more detail, they can be in touch independently?
Of course.
Thank you. That, those all sound in line with what we've been discussing, and that will bring us to legal business.
Thank you, Your Honor. Other than what we've discussed, I have nothing further.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. I am now ready to adjourn the meeting of the city council, adjourning at 9:16 PM.
Good night.